All right, we are all here, great. We have reconvened and there is nothing to disclose from closed session, nothing to report out, so we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:07 PM. And that takes us to our regular meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February the fourteenth, 2024. It is 6:07 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, February sixteenth at 1:00 PM and Sunday, February eighteenth, also at six, or sorry, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Thank you. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Heckard prior to consideration of the agenda item. And with that, Mayor, we would be moving into the roll call. For the roll call, Councilmember Rubles.
President.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. Thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Would our Vice Mayor please assist?
Yes, thank you. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endure because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite CSD Director Angela Spees, who is with us this evening, to lead us in the pledge.
And over hard pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next item.
Under Section Three, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section Four, our Presentations and Announcements, and that one item being 4.1, Proclamation, Recognition of Black History Month.
Excellent. At this time, I would like to invite up Dr. Tekoi Porter to the podium as I read our proclamation for Black History Month, February 2024. Whereas since 1976, February has been designated Black History Month as a time in which especially memorable events are recognized and celebrated, honoring and affirming the importance of African-American history and culture as an essential element to the foundation of American history. And whereas the city of Elk Grove recently hosted Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Breakfast, where we celebrated his legacy and lasting impact on our community, and we were honored to have Dr. Tekoi Porter as the event's keynote speaker. And whereas Dr. Tekoi Porter, an Elk Grove resident, is the founder, president, and executive director of National Action Network Sacramento, a civil rights organization that advocates for justice, equality, and opportunity. He has effectively led this organization, building partnerships, mobilizing communities, and influencing policies. And whereas Dr. Porter is also the senior pastor at Genesis Church in Sacramento, where he has faithfully served for over 24 years and led many community development initiatives. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Elk Grove, and the City Council of the city of Elk Grove hereby confirms and affirms and proclaims February 2024 as Black History Month in the city of Elk Grove, and we thank Dr. Tekoi Porter for his commitment to the community. Signed, this February the fourteenth, 2024. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much.
Yes, the floor is yours.
And I got three minutes, so I want to make sure I stay in time. This is a surreal moment for me. I'm totally grateful you don't think about these things while growing up that this would ever happen. So thank you so much for this, Mayor Singh Allen, and my friend Rob Brewer, Vice Mayor there, and to esteemed members of this council. Again, deeply honored and humbled to receive this proclamation from the city of Elk Grove, affirming February 2024 as Black History Month. And as a recipient of this recognition, I'm generally grateful for the opportunity to be a part of this celebration, highlighting the rich heritage and invaluable contributions of African-Americans in our city and region. Again, it was my privilege to be able to keynote the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Breakfast, even though in the state I was in, it was a great opportunity to be able to honor Dr. King's enduring legacy and reflect it on the significant impact he had on communities across our nation. Before I go any further, I will need to thank my family, especially my wife and some church members who are here. Could y'all stand up? Please, thank you. I have to take all of them out for Valentine's Day.
Oh, good. Absolutely.
Exactly. It's on pastor, right? But thank you all for coming. And as pastor of the Genesis Church in Sacramento and the president of NAM Sacramento, my journey has been guided by a fervent commitment to building others, uplifting voices, bridging divides, and cultivating an inclusive society where every individual, regardless of background, can thrive. Yet, as with any journey, there has been challenges along the way. The path of social activism is often marked by adversity, setbacks, and moments of despair. But in such times, having a home in Elk Grove to retreat to and find solace has been indispensable for the peace and well-being of me and my family. And over the past three decades, I have witnessed Elk Grove's remarkable transformation from a rural agricultural community into the vibrant and diverse city it is today. It's been a place where my family and I have not just existed, but truly lived, realizing our dreams from owning a starter home in 95624 to constructing one from the ground up. Elk Grove has provided us with the opportunity to flourish. And the exceptional education provided by the Elk Grove University School District has also played a significant role in the success of my three children. They all graduated from Casuna's Oaks High School with honors and are now thriving in their academic pursuits and careers. So in closing, I again extend my heartfelt gratitude to the mayor and the City Council of Elk Grove for this proclamation and for your steadfast commitment to honoring Black history and culture. Thank you so much. Again, I'm honored.
Thank you. And if you can stay right there, sir, we have a proclamation, but I wanted to say something, and that is, you know, just knowing the condition that you were in, but you still turned up for your community speaks volumes to your dedication. I know you were in dire condition in the hospital, and it's a clear sign of your strong will and determination and that God is not done with you, that your purpose is giving back and all of the wonderful things that you've done for the last several decades. We are so grateful, not only for our city, but for our region. Congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Dr. Porter, I also want to say thank you, because I know that you've done MLK Celebration at Capital Christian for so many years. I've attended several of the services on MLK, and you've always done an amazing job. Definitely always felt the spirit move, so super appreciative. Thank you for everything you're doing in the community and everything you've done.
Wow, thank you.
And Dr. Porter, definitely want to, I'm glad that you are here so you can receive your flowers today, because you and I know the condition you are in and that you summoned, that God summoned you out of bed, and you presented a stirring, uplifting, positive presentation that day on January thirteenth. And that does not go unnoticed among, for the city, or for the council, or for myself. It shows the love that you have for our city and the love that your wife has for you and sending you straight back to bed. So we can enjoy you for more years to come. And so I am definitely thankful that you are here in Elk Grove, one of our own residents, and really representing the way you are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, I pretty appreciate that.
Will you all come down?
Wonderful.
Come on up, too.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is so great. Thank you.
Bishop?
I gotta get you up and singing.
Would you like your members, whoever you should have joined?
Come on, please. You may like your Valentine's.
Come on. This is all about celebrating community.
Yeah, you gotta earn that bond, Valentine's.
That's right.
Please.
How are you? Fine, how are you? Very good. Oh, thank you. Wonderful. All right, so let's just get all real comfortable.
Yeah. Are we good?
All right. Next up is public comments. Have folks signed up here? First is Jackie Perez, followed by Sandy M.
Okay, I'm not very good at this, you guys know that. So I'm here to speak on the Warming Center. I read an article the other day from the Elk Grove News saying that there's only a handful of people in Elk Grove that is concerned about what's happening. I feel bad because what they just did was really positive and awesome, so I don't want to kill your parade, but I love Elk Grove, just like you do, and I'm trying to fight for it. So I've noticed that, like, the Elk Grove News spoke about a small group of people only caring about what's going on in Elk Grove. And I had sent pictures to you guys of a lot of things that we've seen and how things have changed in the last year in Elk Grove since there's been conversations about a Warming Center and a homeless Elk Grove's building. People are kind of coming in droves to Elk Grove, and some people in our group have talked to them, and they're coming as far as Oakland. And they're using businesses' hoses to wash their clothes and to, you know, take care of themselves. And we're just finding lots of people, you know, parking out and just hanging out with all their belongings all up and down the boulevard. And a year ago, I don't think that I would have ever thought in my wildest imagination that I'd have to fight for this town and for the safety of this town, and that I would even be up here speaking like this, because this is not something that I'm passionate about, but not something I feel like I'm good at. I just, what I was starting to say was that Elk Grove News was saying that there's only a small group of us that are trying to fight this, or trying to help, or whatever you want to say. But we have spoken to so many different people in Elk Grove that have said they're living behind Bel Air, they're camping out at Dollar Store, the ladies there are scared for their safety, they're living there in front of Dollar Store, they're meandering around behind the houses in Bel Air, the houses behind Bel Air, I should say. So there's a lot of people from every culture that we have spoke to, whether it's Indian or whatever. They're just people that are passionate about what's going on and worried about their safety of their children, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys got the pictures that we emailed to you about how much Elk Grove is changing in just this small amount of time, mostly since the Warming Center opened, but since we've been talking about opening a homeless shelter as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next up is Sandy M., followed by Debbie Woolley.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you so much for having us here. Can everyone hear me? Yes? Okay, great. Thank you so much for being public servants, for having taken these positions on, for taking your oaths of office to defend and uphold the constitutions. We are coming to you this evening in peace, as we, the people, to give you notice and instruction so that you and your agents may provide due care. This national lockdown notice has already been given to 50 state governors, to the President of the United States, and to the Supreme Court, to the United States Senate, and the United States Congress. We are now giving you a copy. In January, we learned that the federal government, in alignment with the World Health Organization, has announced an amendment to a credible threat of a public health emergency. Their expanding countermeasures now include both Ebola and Marburg viruses, and extension of liability immunity to manufacturers, distributors, program planners, qualified persons and their officials, agents, and employees. We have included this report in our notice envelope just given to you. We have also learned that the government was never granted any authority to lock down the people, even in times of emergency. The main object of government is the protection and preservation of personal rights, private property, and public liberties. The government just serves for our benefit as public officers, trustees, and servants of the people. We are also attaching a list of unalienable rights, which includes the right to accept or refuse any medical treatment for any reason. Since this council has a history of putting the city under health emergency orders for extended periods of times, we are very concerned that another round of involuntary lockdowns and health orders could occur in our fair city. My colleague will continue.
Hi, I'm Debbie Woolley, and I'm with We the People. Please take notice that all states in our republican form of government have sworn to protect individual liberty as a condition to be hired as trustees. The people of America are all guaranteed the same rights in all the states. As an elected official, do you believe it's your duty to always protect the natural rights of the people so they are guaranteed enjoyment of all their natural rights? Or do you believe that in some time of panic or emergency that you can remove the people's rights to freely exercise liberty, movement, worship, commerce, or any other purpose that is lawful? If so, please show constitutional authority where you get that power, posting this granted authority conspicuously within the next 15 days, notifying the public and all agents. If you cannot show where you got the authority and you take any action blocking the people's rights to enjoy freedom, then any lockdown mandate or forced use of any medical device will be construed as being done with malice intent, full knowledge and understanding against your trust indenture, your contract, your contract with the people. That would be the Constitution. This notice is given in peace and with the love of Christ that you and your agents may provide due care to those who have all political power, the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, David Capazano. Is that you, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Dave, and I'd like to thank the mayor and the vice mayor and the city council and the staff for all your hard work and dedication to the city of Elk Grove. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Dave was our last speaker, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Before we go on to our city manager's report, Ms. Bontrager, I noticed your expression when we heard from a previous public comment as it relates to the Warming Center. Is there any clarifying information you wanted to provide perhaps?
Yes, absolutely. So we really appreciate our community members letting us know of any issues that they're having out with possible guests of the shelter or when they're seeing people experiencing homelessness in our community. I did have a chance to review Ms. Perez's photos with our navigation team, which I'm pleased to say now includes two navigators, including one with extensive experience with folks with severe mental health issues. And they were familiar with all of the individuals in the photos and have actively worked to connect them to resources. We are seeing people, folks experiencing homelessness, often move around quite a bit and come in and out of our community, and we do actively work for those who have come from another community or may have left their belongings in another location. We do try to connect them back with that community from which they came. And so we are not seeing that the shelter itself is creating a draw for folks to come to Old Town, but rather it's more related to some of the actions that other cities have undertaken or the county in terms of the sweeps that they've done recently related to homelessness. But I would encourage anyone watching this meeting, please email me personally if you're seeing things out in the community, and I will have our navigation team work to address them. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for that information. Next up is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Jason Bearman, city manager, several items report on this evening. We do have a youth commission event coming up. Members of the community are invited to attend the Path to Positivity event on Saturday, February 24th, from noon to four o'clock at the Whackford Community Center, which is on Bruceville Road. The free event aims to destigmatize and raise awareness about the critical issue of mental health in the teen population, provide resources from citywide organizations, guest speakers, activities, food, music, and games. Teens can even earn volunteer hours. Visit the city's website for more information. Elk Grove's diversity is one of its most amazing characteristics. Applications are being accepted for a vacancy on the city's Diversity and Inclusion Commission through February 21st. This is a volunteer position for Elk Grove residents appointed by the mayor with the consensus of the city council. Commissioners assist the city through education, outreach, advocacy, and acting as community ambassadors. Volunteers help create long-lasting and positive impacts on our quality of life. Nominations for the 2024 Stars of Service Awards, formerly known as the Mayor's Volunteer Awards, are being accepted online through February 29th to recognize those individuals, businesses, and organizations that serve our community. The grant application period for funding for next year is closing for our nonprofits. Today is the last day to apply for the Community Development Block Grant and Community Service Grant. The event sponsorship grant applications will close on February 23rd. Visit the city's website at elkgrovecity.org/grants for more information. And finally, in accordance with the city's holiday schedule, City Hall will be closed next Monday, February 19th, in observance of Washington's birthday. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for our city manager? Seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to our next item. Our next item is our consent calendar items, and I have a readout for item 7.5, which is the adopting the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the employment agreement with Jason Bearman as city manager. Item 7.5 is an amendment to the city manager contract. Based on positive performance, the city manager's base salary is to be increased to $315,000, and he is to be provided 40 hours of additional management leave annually, as explained in the staff report. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up for this item for public comment for consent. I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and look for council approval.
Move consent.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Under Section Eight, there are no public hearings on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section Nine, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 9.1, which is receiving and filing the Elk Grove Aquatic Center annual report for 2023.
Excellent.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Brewer, members of the city council. I'm Mike Dobson, Recreation and Community Services Director for Casuna CSD, and I'm here to report out tonight on the 2023 year for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. How do I?
Mr. Dobson, there's a keyboard in the podium. If you pull that out, and you should be able to advance using the keys.
Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
So I guess prior to starting the presentation, I do want to first like to acknowledge the strong working relationship both myself and my staff have with your city staff, most notably Lana, the Community Event Center Manager out at District 56. I've had the privilege of working with Lana over the last five years, and she's been a true partner over this time as we continue to make the Elk Grove Aquatic Center one of the premier 50-meter aquatic complexes in all of Northern California. So to start with, we have a listing out of some of our aquatic programs.
Day to give you the 2023 Aquatic Center report. I wanted to preface this by saying, when I joined the city in 2018, the Aquatic Center were three very large holes in the ground. Today, we are looking to be one of the premier aquatics facilities in the region. We are often sought after to host meets. We have swim teams wanting to swim there and lots of interest in participating in events there. When I began in 2018, one of the conversations was that this facility would always be subsidized by the city. Aquatics facilities are typically subsidized. They don't make the money that it needs to get complete cost recovery for because we want to make sure that aquatics facilities have public value. As a recreation professional, I will tell you that swimming is a life-saving skill, and we want to make sure everyone in our community has access to that. The facility is now about five years old, which is really hard for me to believe, and we're starting to see normal wear and tear on things. So, we're starting to see that reflected in our maintenance costs. The last part I would like to leave you with is that I think one of our frustrations is that inflation and economic factors are weighing on the facility and causing some budget overruns that we are working to mitigate, and I will send it over to Mike Dobson, the Kasuna CSD Director of Recreation, to talk about aquatic programming, and then I will come back to you about the budget and then what we're doing to mitigate some of the circumstances.
Excellent, thank you, Lana. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Brewer, members of the city council. I'm Mike Dobson, Recreation and Community Services Director for Kasuna CSD, and I'm here to report out tonight on the 2023 year for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. How do I?
Mr. Dobson, there's a keyboard in the podium. If you pull that out, and you should be able to advance using the keys.
Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
So, I guess prior to starting the presentation, I do want to first like to acknowledge the strong working relationship both myself and my staff have with your city staff, most notably Lana, the Community Event Center Manager out at District 56. I've had the privilege of working with Lana over the last five years, and she's been a true partner over this time as we continue to make the Elk Grove Aquatic Center one of the premier 50-meter aquatic complexes in all of Northern California. So, to start with, we just have a listing out of some of our aquatic programs that we offer there. I will go into some more detail with these throughout the presentation. So, as we look at some of the programs by the numbers, I think I'd first like to point out that I think in some of what Lana will talk about is about the fiscal year. These dates are more of a calendar year, specifically so we can see what a true year looks like rather than going over two summers, especially since this last year was probably the first year post-pandemic that we had a really clear snapshot of what the pool could do and what the pool could look like. So, as we have some statistical things here, you see program hours, you know, large numbers of participants. There is the Laguna Ridge discount for some of the programs as directed by the city council years ago for some of those members, and then some of the revenue associated with that. One of the areas I want to specifically point out is the lifeguard training. So, you'll see that there's no revenue in there. One of the things proactively we did last year was we stopped charging our staff to take this class. We wanted to remove cost as a barrier. In doing so, we went from having 120-ish staff in the summer of 2022 to almost 200 staff in this last summer. You know, also in doing so, this is like basically put us as a true benchmark in the industry where we are probably the only large municipal aquatic center post-pandemic that not only is at pre-pandemic staffing levels, but for us, we are exceeding it. One of the programs I specifically wanted to call out from this presentation is our water fitness program. As you see listed here, we have a number of water fitness programs that we offer. Some of these are the typical classes you would see. Other ones are very specific and kind of specialized, as we have specialized instructors. This makes our fitness, our water fitness for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center almost unrivaled, I would say, throughout the state, specifically because of some of the specialized things that we have. And this has increased, you know, substantially over the last year, and I would attribute that to some of our demo days where we've offered it free to the community kind of to test out that have been largely successful, that they've wanted to then sign up after. The next slide is just kind of an aggregate of all of the aforementioned programs with just a large picture of all of the program hours, all of the participants throughout the course of the calendar year, and then all of the total revenue. Two things that came back this last summer due to the increased staffing levels were both pool parties and pool rentals. As you see here, we unfortunately weren't able to offer this, I think, since 2019, just because as a decision both with my staff and Lana, we wanted to prioritize things that had high visibility or core aquatics programs or were higher in revenue. So, but fortunately, these came back, and then pool parties are continuing to grow as we are expanding the footprint, both with the room, deck utilization, and some other things to further increase some of those revenues. The CSD staff, we have a number of first responder certifications mandated by the state and the county, as you see there. So, we have a number of lifeguards. Also, we have a number of the fitness instructor certifications that I've alluded to in the past with the Aquatic Exercise Association and the Aqua Body Strong. Basically, with these certifications, it allows us to teach that wide array of water fitness classes. I do also want to point out our lifeguard training instructors and our instructor trainers, these are invaluable certifications that the staff possess because it allows for us to not only teach the lifeguard training class in-house, but to further train instructors. So, we have a succession plan that when instructors leave, we can continue to do this in-house, thereby saving both time and making it efficiency and having us certify and recertify any staff at any given time. Next, I will address some of the challenges, you know, with an aquatics facility. First, we'll talk about some of the facility issues. So, as Lana mentioned, you know, as we are coming up on, you know, the fifth year of operation, it goes without saying, many of the things that we deal with now are long past their warranty. Over this last year, you know, we've had some issues with the water slide as the cracked flume. So, I guess for everyone listening, the flume is the tube that the riders ride in. So, that was replaced along with some electrical issues in June of this last summer. There was the replacement of the bleachers, those in-ground cement bleachers around the 50-meter pool in September of 2023, prior to the opening of the summer, the chairlift replacement in May, and then throughout the course of the year, various pool pump replacements and repairs that are needed just with the ongoing use and the continued use, as well as the lighting on the pool deck with some faulty wiring that was replaced just this last January. Next, I'm going to look at some of the challenges from an operational standpoint. I think one of the first challenges, and this is, I guess, something that we as a CSD have as a challenge, is the staff that work at our aquatics facility gain valuable experience and high-level competencies, which makes them very valuable for promotional opportunities. In doing so, we've probably had, I think, 13 full-time aquatic staff for both managing Wackford and the Elk Grove Aquatic Center since this facility is opened. Of those 13, four are currently on staff, and of eight of the other nine have either gotten a promotion internally or with other organizations. The one person that didn't get promoted was commuting about 45 minutes and chose to take a lateral position at a city much closer to where that person lives. So, with that understanding, we're very cognizant of the turnover, and we are continually looking at succession plans to try and mitigate that or to have ongoing operations. You know, we look at the pool is heavily impacted during high-use times. I'm sure everyone hears that, like, you know, it'd be great to, you know, do all these things at the pool. Everyone wants to use the pool, you know, 6:00 PM, June, when it's really hot outside. I think, you know, with our relationship with Lana, we're great about looking at how we're going to prioritize usage to try and make it that everyone in the community can make use of this facility. The next part, the next two I wanted to touch on, I know Lana is probably going to mention it a little in hers. The first is their inflationary costs of running an aquatic facility that just continue to rise. These are large, these are facility costs driven that, you know, it's really tough to recoup for large year-round aquatic facilities such as gas, and that's the gas to heat the pool, electricity, chemicals. We are meeting with staff monthly, with your staff monthly, to mitigate any of these costs and to try and maximize any efficiencies where we can. Next, in the fiscal year 2223, there were some revenue shortfalls. Most of that was from, as we can really think back to summer of 2022, the start of the fiscal year, when we just weren't fully staffed. We're still trying to recover staffing-wise coming out of the pandemic. And I do want to let everyone know, that wasn't just for this facility. That was, A, everything in recreation, but that's also what we saw for all of our aquatics programs. As I mentioned, though, the good news is, moving forward, we've taken a lot of proactive approaches to mitigate this issue with having almost 200 staff, and as I'll mention later, we're going to have a high, looks to be a higher retention rate for those staff. Other expenses, you know, with all of the staff, minimum wage is continuing to increase, which is an ongoing cost. You know, part-time staff now receive up to 20, up to 40 hours of sick leave, which we have to start budgeting for for when they take that time. You know, I would say for context, when I first gave this presentation to the council back in 2018, minimum wage was at $11. Now, it's at 16, so that's about a 45% increase. Lastly, you know, as we talk about the replacement of parts, services, and equipments, you know, that's just five years of just continual use. It's five years of constant sun, constant chemicals, constant bather load, you know, but that's something that every aquatic facility throughout the state and the nation are dealing with right now. I'm on a number of, I guess, working groups and chats where it's something that everyone's trying to wrestle with of, you know, the subsidy is continuing to increase, and how do we try and mitigate any parts of that subsidy that we can. Last part, I do want to talk about some accomplishments. You know, I've mentioned again that we have a really positive relationship of the staff and the city staff, which has aided in the success of a lot of things that are going on. With the new full-time supervisor and coordinator, we're fully staffed in aquatics in total, which is great because that helps for, I guess, more hands, he pulls lighter lifting. We have all these professional development opportunities that we tried, so we can continue to stay at the forefront in this industry. As I mentioned, we've had almost 200 aquatic staff, and we anticipate about a 70% retention rate. So, that'll be, that'll be really helpful in, we'll have less recruiting, more experienced staff coming back year after year after year. Water fitness is continuing to grow in both popularity and revenue, and that is, you know, attributed to some of the great instructors we have, as well as some of those demo days. You know, from a swim meet perspective, we were able to host the Bill Rose Classic and the Comstock Championships, both multi-day meets. You know, that just speaks to, you know, I think, I think if people asked, and probably asked Lana, everyone wants to have a swim meet here. It is one of the premier facilities in all of Northern California. I think with that, Lana's going to come back.
So, thank you, Mike. So, as Mike said, his presentation kind of focused on the calendar year. Mine is focusing on the fiscal year, starting with fiscal year 2223. So, as you notice, the bottom number is a 44% increase, which I will tell you is disappointing and staggering to me, and I want to tell you that these increases fall into three pockets that were difficult for us to control, the first being utility costs. So, as Mike said, gas for pool heating increased by 110%. I'm going to give you a snapshot. So, in January of 2021, we paid $13,829 to heat the pool. In January of 2023, we paid $42,890 to heat the pool. Those are costs that we can't control. The pool needs to be heated in order for it to be a USA Swim sanctioned pool. We need to keep it between 78 and 82 degrees year-round. We do what we can to tarp the pools, to preserve heat and chemicals. Colder winters, higher demand on gas causes those utilities to rise. In addition, electricity went up 35%. So, utility costs are very, are variable that is very difficult to us, for us to control. Maintenance issues, Mike alluded to several of the maintenance issues which were unplanned for. We meet monthly now to discuss and monitor the budget. We are working through some of our maintenance issues and budgeting more money to ensure that these spikes don't happen in maintenance costs in future so that we're able to accommodate that at an easier rate, and so you're not seeing these giant increases exponentially. Last, the revenue shortfall. It's pretty hard to determine how many people are going to visit the pool in a year. We were just coming out of the pandemic. We were starting to see people starting to want to gather, but kind of tentative on it, and we didn't have the staffing to do that. So, that led to a $108,000 shortfall for that year. Those three things together make up about $300,000, which is the difference in the subsidy. Moving forward to this year, we are about halfway through the fiscal year as of December 31st, and our picture is much brighter. I want you to know that we, both CSD and the city, are making its revenue expectations. We're at 50% for both user group revenue, and that includes swimmates. CSD is at 50% for public programming, with the higher months of summer and spring still to come. I am hoping for a very prosperous year. In general, we're budgeting for costs for electricity, gas, and utilities. We've tried to mitigate some of those spikes so that, as I said, we're not seeing those giant increases that we saw in prior years. And I will tell you that this facility has had us scratching our heads a little because we opened in 2019, we closed in 2020, and so really the baseline of what this facility actually costs is only coming into view now. So, this 2023 year was probably the first year that we had a normal operating year, and I use that term loosely, but we're starting to see what this facility actually costs. So, what is the path forward for aquatics of 2024? As Mike said, they've added winter swim lessons, which is seeing 103% increase from December of last year. So, that's a great thing. We've increased, increased marketing of the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. So, we're trying to get more lap swimmers in. We're trying to get more people to use this facility. We still have lots of people who come and say, I didn't even know this was here. So, what we're trying to do is get people through the door, and once they know that it's here, our hope is that they will return. As Mike said, we have added a pool party location, so we will have several locations on the deck, as well as utilizing the room to maximize that space and increase revenue. The two meets that you see, the Delta League Championship in April and the CIF Sam Joakine Championship, these are school-based meets. These are Elk Grove High Schools and other high schools in the region. So, this was a good get for us because, one, our swimmers can swim at home and compete here, and, secondly, these are meets that are held outside of the summer seasons when we have high impacts. So, our hope is that these swimmers will be here, can perform before a hometown crowd. It is a great get for us to have these two meets coming. This year, we're hosting two demo days on April 20th and April 28th. As Mike said, this is a free day for people to test out our aquatics fitness classes. Sometimes you don't want to commit to doing aquaspin or aqua jogging. This gives you a chance to kind of do a round robin, test everything out, do I like this class, and it really does increase participation in it because now you kind of know what it is, what the level activity is going to be, and so people are more prone to be able to register once they do these things. Our rec swim will open on Saturday, May 27th. We look forward to a good season and maybe a hot summer. Last summer was a little bit cooler than most, which was great for most of us, but not great for an aquatics facility. We've added more fitness classes. I continue to work with CSD to improve and expand those classes that we're offering. We're basically trying to come up with a new special event, so we're throwing around different ideas that are out there. And the meets that you see coming in July and August, these are large rec and USA swim meets. These swim meets will bring 800 to 1,200 swimmers to the facility. Each meet is a two- to three-day meet. So, those are hotel stays and sales tax generation as well as meet fees. And we increased fees as of January 1st, so I was here not too long ago talking about that. The other path forward is we're seeking to increase the user group rate, probably when the contracts are due in 2025. We have not increased their rate since we made those agreements in 2019, so we will look to have those conversations with our three user groups, who are the school district, the Piranhas, and the Gators. Our solar array has come online, which has helped with some of our electricity costs. So, we're hoping that that will help to decrease some of the electricity costs that we're seeing. And then, lastly, the maintenance budget that I alluded to, that'll stop the spiking. So, lastly, I want to conclude by saying that we are becoming a premier facility in the region. I have lots of inquiries about availability, which we don't have any, which is a great problem to have. You know, and our investment in this facility is not just an investment in providing recreation, it's an investment in saving lives. You know, we're teaching kids to swim. We're building a recreation facility that people enjoy coming to, and it is something that I am very proud to manage. Happy to take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you so much for that. Before we go to our council colleagues here, I will open up the public comment opportunity, and nobody has signed up to speak on this item, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and start to my left with Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, Mike, Lana, and great job operating the facility all year long. I do recall when we passed this that we predicted it would operate in a deficit, and your estimates back then are pretty spot-on, so I'm not surprised by any of this. I want to compliment you again on that video I saw posted about the cleaning of the pool. I don't remember where I saw that, on which social media platform, but that was, that was amazing. You had no idea how, well, just how bad it looked, and then when you guys were all done, it was fantastic. So, just gives you an idea of how much it takes to maintain and operate this facility. But on the flip side, it's, it is a huge treasure, not only just for what you articulated with these, these various meets, but families and individuals alike are using it every day. So, it's great to have this amenity in our community. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Brewer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to thank Mr. Dobson and Ms. Yoshimura for this report. It was very thorough, but one of the things that I loved It was very thorough, but one of the things that I loved was the transparency that you conveyed of the challenges that we had all seen from the beginning and how things kind of turned the corner this year. Does it look like we have a firm, a firm handle on our forecasting for attendance in terms of headcount coming every year? Because there's a lot of courses we're offering, there's a lot of events taking place, the competitive swim meets, the high school swim meets. How does all that play into the bigger picture of things? Because obviously with a public pool, revenues and expenses will always be a little, a little skewed to the expenses side. But attracting people and bringing in new people, especially people who have just, are just now discovering District 56, discovering the Aquatic Center. Are we getting a good sense based off of 2023 numbers of what 2024, 2025 and 2026 will look like from a three-year outlook?
Yeah, I can answer that. Yeah, Vice Mayor Brewer, I can answer that. I believe right now the way that we are trending, we'll probably see increases in attendance slightly moving forward. I think as I mentioned in that, like, some of the limitations that we had in the past were staff-related. Those are no longer limitations, so now we can offer more programs, like we can offer more swim lessons. I think that the times that we have are kind of, I don't want to say set in stone, but they, they're a little more set based on making it available for user groups and other programs. But we believe that we have a, as long as it's warm in the summertime, people will continue to come, use and utilize this. I think the more, there's people that now more understand that we have it. Gathering outside again is, I don't think, that much of an issue anymore. So we are starting to see the trend increase back to, I don't want to keep saying pre-pandemic, but let's just say to the 2019 summer, we are sending, we are seeing those trends for all of our aquatics facilities.
I would add one thing is, one of the things that CSD staff and I are working on is trying to get schools to hold their end of year party here. So my goal is basically, like, if middle school people know that there is this pool, that they'll have their end of year party here and then hopefully come back during the summer. So it introduces a new clientele. Our pool is a little bit scarier than Wacford, the slide is a little bit taller, the inflatable is a little bit tougher. I have tried it, I'm not doing that again, but, you know, we think that's our niche market is that middle school, high school range. So Mike's staff and I are working together to try to identify those schools, talk to their activities directors, like, this is a great place to host a party. You know, and once that clientele kind of knows, and my hope is that they'll come back for rec swim and other programming as time goes on, bring their parents. We also, I work very hard to market our programming to the senior center, which is adjacent at the center. This is the prime target of a lot of water fitness as it's low-impact, high cardio. So those types of marketing things are things we're working on together to try to increase participation.
And as we, as we attract, as we attract new people to use the facility, I noticed we have, we have those classrooms on the side. And are they part of a package of, of the rental for the actual parties themselves or can they be used separately? Because I know there's been several workshops that have taken place there, but people use it as a gateway to go into the pool.
Yes, so primarily right now they're used as like pool party package rooms or as a part of a rental type of a thing. They can be used for, at certain times, for, I guess, non-aquatic related things. The, the danger is we, it has to be at a time where we have staff there or just because you have easy access to the pool deck. So our fear would be that we just don't want people wandering on the pool deck without some sort of staff there, just from a liability standpoint.
Well, I'm very appreciative of the information provided. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Spies, any questions, comments?
Yep, I've got some comments here. So, thank you for the report, I appreciate it. This is, this is a complex problem, right? And I think everybody out there, I think everybody in the room, every resident can sympathize with, you know, the inflation in the price of heating and fuel. And if you're not, then I maybe haven't paid your bill lately because it's, it's going up, folks. And I think, you know, the price of labor, that's obvious, right? I mean, I don't think anybody can disagree with that. You know, inflation in the pool and the chemical supplies, right? Those, those are things that I just, you know, it just totally makes sense, right? Everything has gone up in cost. And so revenue side is just one side of the equation for me, right? That's, that's a side that actually might be a little bit more difficult to control, particularly given our past, right? With the, with the pandemic and such. But what, we've had now two fairly large jumps, or this would be the second fairly large jump in expectation of what the, the contribution from the general fund is, right? And I'm a bit concerned that we need to have a little bit more confidence in what next year will look like, because I think we'd have some very difficult questions to answer if we see another jump of that size, regardless of whether it's within the span of control or not. So what I am going to ask my compatriots here, if you would be willing to come back, bring back in 60 days, a plan, a justification, a refiguring of the numbers so that we have a little bit more fidelity in understanding what to expect and what we can control in the next one and three years. I think if we fail to do that, then we're going to be in, in a little bit of trouble. We at least have to ask the question, we got to dig a little bit deeper. So I would ask that, that we can bring that item back in 60 days.
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. And again, I appreciate it, I get it, I get it, but we just, we got to take a look at it. One of the things that does trouble me is, and I don't know, you know, how, what do you call it, a grandstand wears out in five years? That seems a little short to me. So maybe we can take a look at the equipment that we have. Is it, is it failing faster than it should? I know it might be out of warranty, but it sounds to me, and again, I'm not an expert, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that I'm an expert. But some of those things sounded like they should have lasted a little bit more than five years. So maybe we can take a look at the equipment and seeing if it's failing at a faster rate than we had expected and, and adjust our budget accordingly. The, the purpose is simply to eliminate surprise. Thank you, appreciate it.
I think, yeah, to your, to that end, on the equipment, given that for two years it wasn't even used. So that makes it even, you know, so the wear and tear seems pretty rapid. Councilmember Robles.
Thank you for the presentation. I guess my only, there's a lot of different concerns, right? And I think my colleagues brought up a lot of good points. For me, mostly it's surrounding, are we marketing the Aquatic Center to the best ability? And Lana, you touched on tailoring it towards specific after, end-of-year pool parties. And I think that's, that's awesome and that's very creative because we need to start thinking of ways to draw in more money, right? And I don't know if it's with another swim meet or, you know, looking if there is somebody regionally here who is going to the Olympics that we can get and start doing workshops and, and just being creative in a space that we have, right? To kind of generate more money, just because I, I think it's really important to kind of bring different stuff, and I know you're doing it, so I'm all for it. Any support that we can do on helping on that and, and selling that, not only to our community but to the surrounding communities, please let us know what we can do. And if we need help to strategize on what we can come up with, count me in. I like to strategize too, so thank you.
I definitely appreciate that. Right now, I am working on a campaign that I saw called Get in the Zone, meaning your heart rate zone. So swimming is one of the best low-impact, high-cardio activities to basically get heart healthy. And so that's something that I am in the process of marketing right now and the fact that the pools are heated. I think a lot of people don't realize the pools are heated and while it's 60 degrees outside, the pools are 78 to 82 degrees, so it's actually quite nice to swim laps there. We offer a lap swim from 9:00 AM to noon most days, so it's a good lunchtime workout. I put a blurb in the city manager newsletter to try to get some of our employees out there. I've created a banner to do that. We're trying to market those, availability of those opportunities as well. So I'm trying to think a little bit outside of the box as well. I will tell you that swim meets are very specialized. So if we brought a Olympic swimmer, I think that that would be specialized to basically people that are in competitive swim versus the general public. You know, and there are lots of different ways to raise revenue. I'm going to give you a prime example. The recreation swim season is about Memorial Day to Labor Day, it's about 10 weeks of time. So three of those weekends, we're hosting very large swim meets, which closes it to the public. And Mr. Dobson and I will tell you that we usually make more money on rec swim than swim meets. That's a policy decision. We don't build 50-meter water to host rec swim, you want those large meets to come into time. I have limited those meets to two meets a year to balance the public's ability to utilize a facility with those larger meets. The new facility at Natomas, they limit their swim meets to once a month during the swim season. So that's, that's a direction we can also look at. So we are exploring every option we possibly can as to how to raise that revenue bar and to decrease costs. I will tell you, if you see in 2022, 2023, the cost that we could control, the other expenses, that was a 58% decrease. Anything we could do to save costs, we tried to do in that year, knowing that the utilities were very high. So where we could, we tried to cut back, knowing that other areas were going to take the higher percent of our budget. So I am very, very deeply committed to getting to that number. I do take this job very seriously and I want to make sure that this is a facility that makes sense for our community.
Has there been any, and I know this is probably super early, but I know that there's a lot of swimmers that go from six to seven. Has that been an option or, because I know Councilman Sun would like to go and swim from six to seven before the day gets started.
The difficult part is, as Mr. Dobson said, everyone wants to swim at that time. And I have user groups who really want that time and they're swimming at, right now, $10 per lane in 18 lanes of time. And they have six to 10 swimmers per lane, so it's really a benefit to our community and our youth to do that. And then if I reserve that time for, let's say, lap swim, I can't guarantee that somebody's going to come in and do that revenue, but I can guarantee the $10 an hour with a user group.
Thinking like Fleet Feet Elk Grove, right? Is there something that we can do, like a aquatic center? I don't know, swim team, I don't know what they're called, so I'm not a swimmer, but kind of create something like that, that we created a club so that, I don't know, folks can come in and...
Yeah, so actually, I feel like we're strategizing right now. Actually, I can ask this question. As soon, as soon as they opened, one of the things that we did was we reached out to them to see if they wanted to do a triathlon club. The unfortunate thing is, they want to practice Monday through Thursday after 6:00 and there's, and there's not, and they couldn't guarantee users and, as Lana just said, there's, you know, there's, there's the swim teams, there's various other things that are going on during that time. So I also, like, some of those things, we have also reached out. I do want to also say, like, you know, as a, as a member and a steward of the CSD and of taxpayer dollars, like, we're, we're all committed in trying to mitigate any of the expenses that we can to maximize revenue. Like, obviously, since I have to, you will see me here at least once a year with this presentation, as long as I'm with the CSD, that my commitment to, to you all as well as to my board of directors is that we want to be good partners, so.
Thank you, and I'll just wrap it up, that I, you know, excellent presentation. And I think you see full acknowledgement that we understand why we've seen those rise in costs. And I have, and I know my teammates here have full faith in, in both of you on how we can cut costs and areas of improvement. So I'm going to defer to the experts here and let you come back to us and let us know how we can help. Like I said, we're here to be supportive, but the numbers are the numbers and the costs go up just like they have for everybody else, so that's just the reality of things. But thank you again for this presentation. All right. I will move on to our next item, 9.2.
Let's consider resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into letters of intent with Mutual Housing California and abode communities for the development of city-on-sites in Old Town and Sheldon Farms North, respectively.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. As Jason said, tonight we'll be talking about letters of intent for two potential affordable housing developments. You may remember that we have an Affordable Housing Fund that's generated primarily by fees on new development, and we use it mostly to provide gap funding for affordable multifamily projects. We are currently funding the Lila Project, which is under construction along Bruceville Road near Big Horn. There are other projects moving forward without city funding, but we know that more, more investment is needed in this area. We have shifted our focus for the Affordable Housing Fund a bit. We once ran a first-come, first-serve program and then changed it to an RFP where developers selected the land. Our current focus is more on acquiring land that we think would, would be suitable for affordable housing and which might provide some other benefits to the community. We have looked for land on which we can do innovative project types. And you'll, you'll see that one of the sites here, we are looking at a more transit-oriented project. We currently own four sites, but tonight we'll be talking about two of those sites. The first one of which is a site in Old Town. The city acquired about two acres of property at Elk Grove Boulevard and Webb Street in 2021. That property is zoned for high-density residential development and we acquired it with the purpose of ultimately partnering with someone to build affordable housing. When we looked at what to put there, we really felt that senior affordable housing would be the best fit for that site, and it was a high priority for our team that the design be in line with the Old Town aesthetic and the historical character of that area. The second site that we're talking about tonight is our Sheldon Farms North site. This is a site that the developer of the single-family home subdivision to the east there offered the city in, in lieu of paying their affordable housing fee on those single-family homes. So we entered into an agreement on that in 2021 and actually took possession of it in 2023. It's about a five-acre site, also zoned for high-density residential. And our vision for that site was really more focused on family affordable housing, and it will be along the future light rail line, the Blue Line extension. And so we wanted to offer something that was more transit-focused to help us build the case that the light rail should come down to Elk Grove. We also own the parcel to the south of the creek there at Big Horn and Bruceville, and that will be the subject of a future design process and RFP. So in order to find developer partners for these two sites, we did a request for proposals process. We worked initially with Cascadia Partners, which is a design firm out of Portland, and they did some work with exploratory models for us, doing some financial analysis and really reaching out to a lot of the developers, community and stakeholders on these sites. And then they ultimately helped us to prepare and to advertise an RFP, which was due in June of last year. We had estimated about $9 million, including the land value, we already own the land, would be available. We got an incredible number of responses to this. I would have been happy with four responses per site, I would have been thrilled. We got 11 proposals for the Old Town site and 12 proposals for the Sheldon Farms North site. So these were very popular sites, a lot of folks were interested in partnering with us. And we had a mix of very local developers, folks who work statewide, and some developers who work nationally in the affordable housing arena. The RFP allowed developers to propose on both sites, but made clear that they would only be selected for one of the sites. So we would not choose the same developer to do both sites. In evaluating it, we looked at the developer's history, developing affordable housing, what experience they had operating that housing. We looked at how closely they were aligned with the city's vision for the site and how they would approach partnership with the city. Because this is, you know, the city wants to be very involved in the process. These are sites we acquired for specific purposes and, and we want that design control or share that, share that vision, anyway. We looked at financial capacity. How, how often has the developer won funds? How often have they come back and asked for more funding on their projects? How quickly are they able to move in developing their projects? And then for the Sheldon Farms North site, we looked at whether the developer included the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities funding in their financial plan, in hopes that we can expand the number of funding sources that are used to fund the... in hopes that we can expand the number of funding sources that are used to fund the projects and decrease the amount of city funding that's needed on them. So once we received the proposals, we did an initial review of them and staff selected four developers for the, to interview for the Old Town site and five for Sheldon Farms North. Our interview panel was comprised of city staff, some outside agency experts from SHRA, from the Capital Area Development Authority. And in the case of the Sheldon Farms North site, we had a community member participate on that panel as well. The interview process really gathered further details on financing, on the developers' plans for community engagement, and on how they planned to approach the design of the project. And the panel was able to come to consensus on recommendations. We took that recommendation to the Affordable Housing Committee in November, and they reviewed the procurement and directed staff to work with Mutual Housing California and Abode Communities on letters of intent. And I'll share a little bit about each of their proposals. And then the representative of each of the development teams is here tonight. And after I finish my presentation, I'll introduce them, and they'll do a brief presentation that highlights their project. So for the Old Town site, the recommendation was to partner with Mutual Housing, which proposed 89 units of senior housing in one three-story building, which would have an elevator. Some strengths of that proposal, Mutual Housing has been around and built a lot in the Sacramento region. They have worked with their team, their proposed architect Mogaveiro, and their general contractor successfully in the past. They do in-house resident services. A lot of our affordable housing developers look to outside entities to provide resident services. But Mutual Housing is solidly in-house, and their services are really strong. They had a great financial plan. We hoped would result in a faster timeline. But we do want to make sure that we aren't, we aren't shortening the opportunities for public engagement and pushing the project along too quickly. So that we do anticipate a lot of community engagement from them. They, they had a very reasonable cost and a, and a frankly, a really good track record of community engagement. They were able to give some, some very solid examples of times that they had changed projects in relation to community feedback. We did want to work with them more, along with our community stakeholders, to further refine the site design. And we've had some, we've had one preliminary meeting with CSD Fire and our planning department to look at some options there and plan to really get the community engagement underway after you all hopefully approve the LOI tonight. On the Sheldon Farms North site, the recommendation was to partner with Abode Communities. They proposed a 240-unit family project comprised of seven buildings, which varied in density from four stories along Bruceville on down to two stories bordering the single family homes there to help integrate with the site. We really liked their overall design. They had a very good focus on natural elements, on a nice facade and the transition to the single family neighborhood. Their team, their architect team had two folks with Elk Grove roots, including one who graduated from one of the Elk Grove High Schools, but I'm not remembering right now. And they are very excited and passionate about coming back to work in the community. They had the highest unit count of all the proposals that we received, so getting the most bang for our buck. And a, a good pre and post-build community engagement strategy. They also had some really well thought out financing, which we've already looked at a couple of times. Funding sources are always changing, and they've been able to adapt as the, as the funding source opportunities have changed. We are very fortunate, the site, when we released, the proposals was not in a high resource area. But for 2024, it is in a high resource area. So that expands our ability to secure some funding. So we would like to work with them on further refining their site design, especially related to the parking and getting as much activation along Bruceville as possible. So what we are proposing is a letter of intent strategy. That's a little bit different than what we've done on previous affordable housing loans, where we've done a loan commitment and a lengthy loan term sheet. The letter of intent is really something that's more, more open. We're looking to work with the developer to reach consensus on a site design that we both can support. We will consider later in the process a loan commitment, but this letter of intent is not a loan commitment, and it's not a guarantee that the city would transfer the land to the developer. It does give them an exclusive right, though, to work on, work with us on developing the site, which lends a level of comfort to them in spending the money that's needed to get to entitlement plans and pursue funding. So the LOI does go over high-level project details, how many units, what affordability they are, some basic financial terms, and most specifically, some timing and milestones, so that we can make sure that these projects keep moving forward. We do have the ability to terminate the LOIs at any time. But if we don't have a cause to do that, then we are on the hook for the developers' expenses incurred in doing those entitlement plans and community outreach. So our recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into the LOIs with Mutual Housing for the Old Town site and Abode Communities for the Sheldon Farms North site. And if that's approved, then our next step would be to really start the, the public engagement process, working with resident groups in, in each area and the developer to get feedback on, on what they're hoping to see with the project. That information will play into the entitlement plans, middles. And then we would kind of concurrently do a conveyance agreement, which would explain how exactly and when the land would be transferred to the developer. We would still be able to consider an Affordable Housing Fund loan commitment, and the Affordable Housing Committee would review that as well. And then the developer would move forward with their funding applications. This is all a long process. These projects are not going to go to construction before 2026, probably more likely 2027. But we need to move forward at this point to get that process started. So that is all I've got tonight, and I am happy to take any questions or move to introduce our first developer. You can ask questions.
If you want to introduce the developer, go ahead, and then we're going to hold off on questions until we take public comment.
Okay, great. So first, I'd like to invite up Mutual Housing. Danny Colosta from Mutual Housing is here tonight. And I will help Danny bring up his presentation.
All right. Thank you, members of the council, and good evening. I just wanted to say a few words, as this is, I think, Mutual's first opportunity to address the city in person in a public forum. So my name is Danny Colosta. I'm a project manager with Mutual Housing, and I'll be part of the development team that's going to be working on the Old Town Senior Site. I'll keep it brief. Mutual Housing, we're a nonprofit affordable housing developer and manager of low-income multifamily communities. It was fun, it was founded in 1988 in Sacramento with the mission to develop, manage, and support sustainable affordable housing. Where residents are partners in advancing equitable communities. So we have a long track record of especially doing new construction, multifamily rehabs as of recently. And we really want to center design, sustainability, and professionalism, and maintaining and developing our portfolio. And we're happy to bring together highly experienced development, property management, and resident services staff along with our design partners, who is Mogaveiro Architects. You may have heard of them. They're a local architect, and they have very experience in multifamily, especially affordable housing development. We've partnered with them in a few projects in the past in the Sacramento area. And I think they're really excited about this opportunity to bring a little bit more of some urban density and infill to this Old Town site. A little bit more about the project. I think Sarah touched on some things. We're targeting 89 units, and this is a senior housing site, so that means households would be 55 and plus. Affordability ranges from 30% to 70% of the area median income. As she mentioned, it would be three stories. And we really like to, through our community engagement process, assess which features and amenities would be best suited for the development. But we definitely want to prioritize, you know, indoor space, outdoor community space, as well as centering the residents with onsite resident staff and supportive services for our residents. We provide in-house. So I'll just go through some quick examples. Lavender Courtyard, this is the one we just finished in 2022. This was also with actually Mogaveiro and their general contractor partner. That was a four-story, 53-unit project. And here's a project in Visalia that was designed by Mogaveiro Architects as well, as well as this one off Stockton Boulevard in Sacramento. And just a little bit about community engagement. So Mutual, we also partner with our architect, and of course, the city as our joint development partners to do community engagement. As Sarah mentioned, we'll have about two months here to develop a plan, and then we really want to get towards some robust community engagement. We really want to emphasize establishing, maintaining, and shared vision, problem solving, and also clear and transparent communication. And we also want to emphasize that it's going to be an iterative process. We don't just intend to do a one-off community engagement with any one group or architect. We really want to keep those conversations happening here, because we know that this kind of community might be a little bit new to the neighborhood and to the city of Elk Grove, so, yeah. So as I mentioned, we'll be undergoing that process here in the next couple of months. And I believe that's it. I just wanted to reiterate our appreciation for being selected by the city and all the city staff that have already started working hard on this development opportunity. And we're really excited to continue to keep the ball rolling, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Great. All right, now I will invite up Megan Pearson from Abode Communities, and I'll get her presentation up here.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. We're really excited to be here tonight, talking about this incredible site. And I just wanted to say that our CEO had planned to be here. Unfortunately, she had a family emergency, so you got me instead. So really, I just want to introduce Abode Communities and who we are. Our organization just celebrated our 55th anniversary. So we've been doing this for quite a while, and we're pretty proud of our track record and what we've been able to accomplish over that time. We've partnered with a lot of public organizations, cities, school districts, different entities. And we're really proud of those partnerships and the homes that we've been able to provide. So our organization is originally based in Los Angeles, but over about the past five to six years, we've really spread out over all of California. And then our development team, so Abode Communities is going to be the developer. Our architect will be David Baker Architects. And as Sarah mentioned, they have two members of their team with Elk Grove roots and connections. So we're really excited to have them as part of our team and get their really more local input on the design of the development. And our property manager will be John Stewart Company, and our resident service provider is Life Steps. And I just want to say that Abode Communities does have its own in-house property management and resident services that will be overseeing these companies. It's just we're based in Los Angeles, so we're trying to partner with more local people here. All right. This is just some, a couple of images of large-scale urban projects that we have developed. And just really wanted to show you, so you can get a feel for the quality, the, the density, the, the how, the, how they fit into the urban fabric. Most of these were public-private partnerships, where we partnered with cities or counties to develop them. And, you know, they've turned out to be really great community resources, and they were fun to develop. So for Sheldon Farms North, it's such a great site. It's so exciting to get a site that is flat. I mean, that's probably why so many people responded to the RFP. We're really excited. It's a great site. As Sarah mentioned, it's in a high resource area. And we're just excited for the community that's being built there with the single family homes being relatively new. It's really exciting. And so we're just really looking forward to partnering with the city, partnering with the community, and developing it. And one thing that David Baker Architects is really, I feel really good at, is developing outdoor space that's really meaningful to the residents of the housing development. So that'll be something that we'll really be focusing on, is making sure that we get some good outdoor space. And this is just some precedent images. These are all by David Baker Architects of kind of the things we'll be looking at as we develop the design. And as we do our community outreach, kind of the things we'll be talking with the community people. So we'll be talking about the open spaces, promenades, how it connects to other open spaces adjacent to the site. We'll definitely be talking about the amenities, what kind of amenities do people want to see at the site? And really talking about those active edges on the main thoroughfares and how it's going to connect to, you know, Bruceville, how it's going to connect to a single family neighborhood. So those are the kind of things we'll be focusing on. And just lastly, I just again want to iterate that we're really looking forward to this partnership. We're really excited for this project, and, you know, hopefully you'll approve the LOI, and we're really excited to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. We have two people signed up, starting with Randy Becker, followed by Jackie Perez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. A group of us have met with city staff over the last six months in regards to the Old Town Senior Project. I won't talk about the design, other than to say that there is a need and there is a want. And we're going to cautiously move forward and be extremely involved, as the five of you know, as we are in Old Town. And so we look forward to working with staff and the developer through the process. But I would caution those folks and understand where we've been and where we're going, because we're going to make the best design and best project for a senior project, as it's been stated. And if it's going to change, we are going to be highly involved. And I've stated my concerns to staff, especially with what we have just gone through. And we're going to move forward with this very cautiously and open-minded and hope that we can come up with something that our seniors, including me and some of you, decide you may want to, may want to move. And for you, it would be a few years, but by then it could be built, so it could be your future home. No, all kidding aside, all seriousness, we, we have met with staff and supported the idea. Like I said, it's the idea. So we want to see how the design process goes. And I can tell you upfront, I'm going to bring a pink eraser. And that's what's going to be used, and we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Jackie Perez.
So Randy said he didn't want to speak about the design. I know I keep telling you guys that I feel like, as far as the design, I feel like it's a really good idea to have commercial on the bottom, so that you keep talking about bringing people into town, not just bringing people in to live in town, but bringing things into town where people will be drawn to come into the city and walk around and have fun, and not just bring more people to town, because there's already a lot of traffic on the boulevard that we always talk about. So if this is truly a senior place, I don't know, you know, how many of them drive still, but that's going to be a problem with the traffic. But I would really love to have a place where it looks like Old Town. My shop is over 100 years old, my house that's right next to it. And it's going to look like this compared to this big, modern place, so I would. So I would really love to have like little coffee places next door and different things that the seniors could all take advantage of, including me. So I just feel like the design is very important in Old Elk Grove and all the people really do worry me as far as the traffic. So I just, I'm very, I get really upset because it's been going on for probably like 30 years that Elk Grove has been saying they want to put in more businesses and fun things for family. And all it seems like you guys want to do is build apartments. And I'm not really, I know that there's a need, but I'm not really sure when we're ever going to get the stuff you've been talking about. Not you guys. This was way before you guys were up here. But it's just, it's never changed. It's always apartments. So that's just the only thing I want to say. Thank you.
All right. That was our final speaker. I will close the public comment opportunity and open up for questions or comments. I'll start to the right. Councilmember Robles.
I only have one question. How do you feel about balconies? But other than that, I, I, I mean, I'll let y'all speak, but I'm ready to make the motion, so.
Well, and, and I, you know, I, I thought of it as well, right? We, we had a, and this is, I believe this is a very, very different situation because we have developers who are willing to work with us and I think that is absolutely fantastic. That is great. I, I think there are some things that are really quality-of-life issues that maybe we had some challenges in different locations in terms of getting light and air. And, you know, and so just, you know, let's make sure that we, I know you do, Sarah, because that's what you think of. But I think that more towards what you're talking about is we're not terribly interested in monolithic, you know, buildings from the past. And so thank you very much for, for working with us on it. And I can't be soon enough, actually. So thank you. Thank you, Sarah, and thank you for the work that you and the Affordable, I know you're on Affordable Housing Committee, Darren, and who else? Sergio? You know, thank you for the work on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, again, Sarah and the team appreciate all your work in bringing, vetting these 23 applications. My colleague, Mr. Councilmember Robles, was referring to you. The Adobe Properties, your CEO, I think would understand the reference. It was a, it was a little bit out of light humor from last time. But I, I still admire, and it was nice to, to see the, the concepts and exhibits again. I'm pleased to hear Mr. Becker and Ms. Perez will be involved. But I, I do, I, I like what, what Mr. Mogaveiro was proposing conceptually at first, what, what it could bring, a new type of look to, to Old Town, one that's more urban, some type of brownstones. I think it would be, I think it'd add a nice, nice touch to, to Old Town. But that's just my opinion and all this is subjective. So I look forward to Old Town getting involved and hearing what they think. And as well as Adobe as well being involved. I just want to make sure I was saying their company right. The use of space, of outdoor space, I think, is really important on that Sheldon North site. So I, I really like the concepts that were proposed on some other projects you had. I think that was San Francisco, right? Yeah. So it was, it was really nicely done as well. But I appreciate the thought that you put into those projects and look forward to seeing what you guys come up with for this one as well. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I want to thank Ms. Bond Trager and the representatives for Mutual Housing in Abode to be here tonight to explain the concepts. The Mutual Housing site will be in my district. Eighty-nine units. Designed for, designed for seniors. And so that's always, that's, that's, that's good to hear. And given how we had, I had some questions the other day about how the aesthetics physically would look like, how they would mesh in with the Old Town SPA, how it would, and how it will look on the grand scheme of, of, of the strip of Elk Grove Boulevard, especially considering how we're about to enter into a process where we're going to underground our lines. I was very pleased with what I heard and knowing that the background and the, and the reputations for both organizations, for Mutual Housing and Abode, and their longevity of being in the business speaks, speaks a lot of platitudes because as my other members, colleagues have alluded to, there's been other projects that have come to us and we had some that promised a lot and delivered halfway. And so just by doing the letter of intent, beginning those discussions, I think that's a very positive thing, especially when you look at the Sheldon Farms North site and how that could play into the bigger scheme of things as we work to bring RT Light Rail into Elk Grove. That plays a bit, that, that plays a, a lot into the, into the positives of what that looks like, especially in the face beside a new neighborhood in that Sheldon Farms North area. So that's a very positive sign as well. And, and, and the Visalia site looked really good. That looked really good as well. But knowing that I'm close to 55, I may be a tenant there one of these days. So thank you very much for the presentation and I look forward to supporting the, the, the item.
All right. Thank you to my colleagues and thank you for the excellent presentation. This is much needed in our city. We're far behind. Everybody is. And we're not as far behind as other cities, but we can continue to do more. So I appreciate this. Looking forward to the senior affordable housing project in Old Town, much needed. Not surprised of the high interest there. And looking forward to seeing the developer and the residents working together. And then for the Sheldon project, you know, I sit on the SAC RT board. And so transit-oriented developments are very important, not only to our board, but just overall in general of sort of that footprint that that leads. So really looking forward to seeing that as well. So I think both high-quality projects, both needed. And thank you both, both of the developers for being here this evening as well. So with that, I will look for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hear some laughter over there. Excellent. Thank you. We will move on to our next item, 9.3.
And let's receive information, provide direction regarding enforcement efforts against illegal fireworks.
All right. Good evening, Council and Mayor and Vice Mayor. My name is Ryan Huber. I'm the Senior Code Enforcement Officer in the Code Enforcement Division. At the August 9th, 2023 City Council meeting, City Council requested staff bring back recommendations and efforts to deter the use of illegal fireworks. Staff recommends the City Council receive the following information and provide feedback and/or direction regarding enforcement of illegal fireworks use and possession. As is commonly known, illegal fireworks are considered a danger to the public because they can cause significantly, significant bodily harm and fires, in some cases, deaths. And as you can see here, the volume of calls for service continue to rise despite enforcement efforts. In 2022, we had, there were 337 calls for service. In 2023, there were 413 calls for service. Of the 413 calls for service, 112 were for illegal fireworks use. Current enforcement efforts continue to involve confiscating illegal fireworks and issuing fines escalating in amounts of $100, $200, and $500. Staff compared other jurisdictions enforcement practices to Elk Grove's. Currently Sacramento County issue citations escalating from $1,000 to $5,000. And they had special fines of $10,000 for illegal fireworks use along the American River Parkway. Citations can be issued to the property owner or social host. And as you'll see, this is a common practice with jurisdictions that we, that we compared. The city of Sacramento issue citations ranging from $1,000 to $25,000. They also have a, a, a property owner and social host component to their enforcement. The city of Rancho Cordova issues administrative fines of $1,000 per violation and up to one year in county jail. They also have a property owner and social host component. The city of Citrus Heights starts their fines at $750 and for the first violation and the second and subsequent violations are at $1,000. And finally, the city of Stockton issues administrative fines beginning at $1,000 and escalating up to $3,000. And they also have a, a property owner and social host component. And based on the practices adopted by surrounding jurisdictions and those available to general law cities such as Elk Grove, staff is recommending the following. Recommendation one is an increase, is to increase administrative citation fines consistent with the maximum allowed by state law for general law cities, which would be $1,000 per violation of the city's ordinance. This would require a code amendment to Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 17.06 to identify a violation as a misdemeanor and the city council will need to adopt a revised fine schedule. Staff recommends continuing with the current practice of progressive enforcement by escalating administrative fines. This would be $100 for the first violation, 200 for the second, 500 for the third, and $1,000 for the fourth and subsequent violations. The second recommendation is to amend the Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 17.06, to clarify and strengthen existing language to allow administrative citations and fines to be issued to the property owner or responsible person where illegal fireworks are set off or where a group is gathering and using illegal fireworks. Our third recommendation, recommendation is to increase promotion of the illegal fireworks amnesty program. Currently, our residents are able to, are allowed to turn in illegal fireworks without consequence to the CSD Fire Department. And I just learned this afternoon that Elk Grove Police will also respond to pick up illegal fireworks as well and have them disposed of. And, and increasing promotion of this would look, would probably would, would look like, or could be done with social media posts from the city Elk Grove Police Department and the fire department posting the information in the, in city newsletter and holding an event prior to July 4th where illegal fireworks can be turned in with amnesty. So this concludes recommendations by staff. However, there is one other option for consideration. And this is to consider moving the city's Salute to Red, White, and Blue event to a date before the July 4th holiday. This would reallocate up to 30 police officers and 25 fire personnel for additional enforcement. Council considered this option in, in November of 2019, but the proposal was not adopted. And I am open for any questions regarding this report and the green sheet the council received. I also have Lieutenant Magdaleno from the Elk Grove Police Department here, along with Fire Chief Ray, to answer any questions related to police and fire issues.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Before we get into the Q and A, I'm going to open up the public comment opportunity. We have one speaker signed up, Mary Ann Simpson.
I'm strongly in favor of adopting all three of the staff recommendations, as stated, to include also the other option of consideration mentioned. I don't feel the fines were enough previously and some people looked at them as a joke. I want to thank city staff for a great job compiling the information presented and, and the others. I do want to add that I feel a number of illegal fireworks were not reported due to the fact the telephones were tied up and callers were unable to get through on the Fourth of July, including dispatchers were unavailable because they were busy taking other calls. And that night, they were kind of understaffed. I myself called in several times and could not get through and was routed to a recording, which was very limited. I'm in favor of moving the Red, White, and Blue event to another day besides the Fourth. It would help with the resources needed for the actual Fourth of July. As to the attendance of the Red, White, and Blue event, it appears that is basically at the maximum attendance now. I used to live across the street from the Elk Grove Park. Park, parking alone created a huge problem, especially for the residents near the park. The event-goers took up all street parking in front of the houses and blocked driveways. Roads were difficult to maneuver due to parked cars along the roadways. And when the event concluded, residential streets were gridlocked for hours after the event. I don't agree that it will cause confusion or reduce attendance. The city, the city still continues to grow with this event and track more people each year. Okay, in conclusion, one, please adopt all the recommendations and the consideration mentions as stated. Two, add additional dispatchers for illegal firework reporting on the Fourth of July. And three, move the Red, White, and Blue event to a different day. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll turn it up here to my colleagues for questions and comments. We'll start to the left this time. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, thank you, Mr. Burke, for your presentation. I, I have a question regarding, or Huber, why did I say Burke? I have no idea. I'm so sorry. I, intuitively, the, the smaller fines that we currently have didn't deter anybody. But what, what surprises me is the county of Sacramento, the city of Sacramento had much steeper fines and they still had a lot of problems. Can you speak to that? Did you interview them and see, was it an enforcement resource challenge? Or is it simply fines still on deterrent?
I did not speak with them about the, about that matter. I can certainly come back to staff with more information regarding them. The information I received was, was as this, I, I took over this project because we were lacking a manager. And I don't, I don't have the, I don't know what information they have as far as if it's a deterrence for them for those types of fireworks. I can say that I have spoken with, I, I reached out to the city of Folsom. I know I didn't, we didn't give them a, a sample here, but I did see, you know, if they had any kind of reduction and they, they responded to me and said it was, it was negligible. There wasn't much of a reduction with their enforcement. I also asked them about relocating. They, they don't have an event always on the Fourth of July. If there's any difference of relocating or, or, sorry, rescheduling the Red, White, and Blue Festival, if we were to, to do that, they would, they, they said in their jurisdiction, it doesn't make much difference as far as the use of illegal fireworks on their end as well.
I think you appear as.
I wanted to answer the question in relation to the city of Sacramento. The fire marshal there is Jason Lee. He's an Elk Grove resident. Hi, Jason, if you're watching. They did, and, and I don't want to, the numbers aren't exact. They did around $100,000 in fines through the four days through the Fourth of July. There's a portion of those that are being appealed and were appealed, but I believe they collected somewhere in the $80,000 range in enforcement fees after all, all the appeals. The effect, there's not a noticeable downturn in the use of fireworks. What there is, is a noticeable uptick in the fees, the funds available to enforce illegal fireworks. And so there's some literature out there and I believe the council received a letter from one of the individuals related with TNT fireworks. The majority of the fireworks that we deal with come in from out of state.
Right.
Until we were able to really stem that flow, this is very, a very difficult task to say that we will make a dent in the, that will slow down the use. It's really the ability for us to properly enforce. As you're aware, I know that I've seen a lot of you out on the Fourth of July on ride-alongs and others. It is a very busy night for law and fire. We are going from fire. There are mess-up calls that are related. We are going from fire, there are any mess-up calls that are related. We are doing the red, white, and blue celebration. It's a very busy night. We're all over the place investigating fires and other things. And so the staff report before, you have before you would give us the ability to implement those fines, collect that money, hopefully then increase enforcement, as we're doing right now. I can tell you anecdotally, I've had folks that are very happy to pay the fine. It's part of their Fourth of July celebration. They're not, they're not really worried about it. They've spent thousands of dollars on, on illegal fireworks. Last year, we took a couple hundred pounds of illegal fireworks off. Did you see that? Yeah, I had one in my trunk that weighed about sixty pounds. It was about thirty inches by thirty inches, and so it's just part of their celebration to pay the fine, and they're not too terribly concerned with it. We do support and recommend. We will be following through with a, a similar presentation to our board behind this, and so there are certainly options.
Yeah, appreciate that. So along those lines, is there a fine, or what fine do you think where the, you know, the perpetrator would, or offender would care?
You know, most of the folks that I, that I've dealt with, when we've gotten there, when they find out it's a thousand dollars, we've really ruined their, I come from a different jurisdiction. This fee was in place in two thousand and twelve. So we did implement that for about eight years prior to my arrival in, in this jurisdiction. We would ruin their Fourth of July night. You would get an appeal, and really their appeal was, please don't fine me that amount of money. And then ultimately, we would not see them again. I did not have a single repeat offender in the eight years that we had it in a previous jurisdiction, because it's something that is very difficult to justify. I don't think a lot of folks know. We do the best we can for outreach. Those people that are brought in fireworks are going to do it anyways, and then they find out that, you know, they've been fined. And then we've also been able to fine per device, and so some of these fines have reached, you know, tens and twenty thousand dollars in, in other jurisdictions.
Okay.
That's where you make the impact.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sue, and just to add to that, I know the city of Sacramento is a charter city, so they can set those fines. They have a little more leeway on doing that as a general law city. So we're, we're capped at a thousand. One option could be, we just start at a thousand.
Yeah.
And, but Sacramento County, I don't know where their fine amounts came from, if there's within state law or not.
I definitely like starting at a thousand, but are, are we also allowed to do, like, per device, or is it a total thousand?
So each, each device is a violation of the administrative, or of, once the ordinance is adopted, each individual violation can be fined. It's up to the council and really the, the staff on how that is implemented. You could find somebody that may have eighty fireworks on them. That would not be uncommon, and that fine would be significant. So there may be some, some cap there that could be discussed, but you certainly can, depending on how the ordinance is written, write in a way where you can fine per device.
Okay.
That's done in, in, in quite a few cities in California, and has been defended.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I'll, I'll.
And Councilmember Sue, I can, I can attest, our, we, a violation is considered possession of an illegal firework or a use of an illegal, illegal firework. So we do treat them as, if you have four, you're going to be cited for four individual violations. So that would, that would increase the fine significantly when that happens. That, that, that I can certainly say would be how we would recommend continuing, moving forward as well.
I see. Okay, thank you very much. I, I very much support staff for, staff's recommendations as well. Mayor?
Darren's point, so it's one thousand per incident, right? Per violation is the maximum? It's not tot, you know, so on Fourth of July, one person has six.
I believe that's consistent with state law. We're proposing one hundred, two hundred, five hundred, a thousand, but that would be, if there were four fireworks caught, we'd do one, two hundred, that's three hundred plus five hundred is eight hundred, plus a thousand is eighteen hundred, would be that fine.
Yeah, but.
If we wanted to start at, say, a thousand or five hundred?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we start something higher.
Because I don't see a deterrent personally.
Agreed, yeah.
It's, you know, a hundred dollars, like, really?
Yeah, that's why I, I would rather start at a thousand, and maybe you only do it one time, at your discretion, our discretion to do one time, or we, you could choose to do per device.
If it's not a deterrent, it's not a deterrent, right? So that's why I, the, the progressive of one hundred, two hundred, to me, it's not a deterrent. If you're spending these kinds of dollars, it's an, it's not a deterrent, other than when, when you described, if it really pinches, then you see the deterrence.
Yeah, so if it's a thousand, right? Then you're starting at a thousand, and then that's one, two, three, four, five thousand for five devices.
So there's no limit there in terms of the accrual. Just we can, one, one violation can only be a maximum of a thousand.
If that's what the council wants to propose, the chief did say you could put a cap on, and you know, if somebody has eighty, or it could be eighty thousand.
Yeah, we get to ten thousand or something, yeah. That's fine, but I do agree, I mean, that's what I'm saying, we need to be steeper.
Yeah, I think it needs to be steeper too, but I'd love to hear from my colleagues.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor? Yes, please.
At a certain point, it does become criminal. Once you have a certain number of, of pounds, it becomes criminal possession, and we would actually take them through the criminal process too. So there is the ability, is it fifty pounds? I don't remember. Twenty-five pounds. So once it's twenty-five pounds, it's the criminal process, and so you're really, you can run those concurrently, you can do both. You could go eighty thousand dollars in fines and the criminal process, but at the twenty-five pound mark, we're going to transition it into the criminal prosecution as well.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So looking at the information and, and what's been going on, I, I do appreciate the thought process of going through these proposals, and I definitely appreciate your digging in on this, Mr. Huber, because I, this has been an issue that has been percolating for several years. And I know that Officer Magdalena and Chief Ray have been engaged in this for quite some time. Chief Ray and I have been talking about this since consuming CSD days, and it's, it's quite an issue, because the question is, as we encourage vigilance of our neighbors, it also comes down to how, how can we identify the individuals when they do shoot off the fireworks? And then how many of those folks are involved? How many of them are neighbors? How do we enforce it? It becomes, it, it doesn't unravel, but it becomes more intricate. But the key thing is that we have something deterrent, that we have a deterrent, because as we go, because truthfully, it's not even four days. It starts on June twenty-fifth, when people have their last year's supply, and then on June twenty-seventh, when the stands go up, but people are pretty much figuring that's the time of the year to grab our good, our goodies. And so people will go to either, whether it be State Line, Reno, Las Vegas, or Henderson, and do, and make their purchases, come back. Some even go to Oregon and a U-Haul and come back. And so it's just, we know because of interstate commerce laws, it's difficult for us to arrest the people who are selling. But if we can have a strong, sturdy infraction system in place, I think that'll deter people, because it is that one time of the year where people will want to do for their kids and want to do for themselves and have a great time, but at the same time, what comes up must come down. And when those fireworks come down, they cause spot fires, they cause house fires, and, and as much as, at the time, the tiered fine system that we had in place, one hundred, two hundred, five hundred, was, was good. It was a, it was a good approach, but seeing how people will treat it like, it's just, it's, it's a little thing, we need to put a little bit more seriousness into it, and that's why I think my colleagues are, are looking at the idea and the prospects of starting out a thousand. And I like, and having, and looking at each device that you have on site and making that part of the offense, and knowing that the poundage, the threshold is twenty-five dollars, maybe it makes people think twice a little bit, because everyone wants to have a good time on the Fourth of July, but no one wants to have their house burned down, and that's just the bottom line. So I'm, I'm very, I'm very favorable of, of the suggestion of doing the one thousand dollar per violation, but to also add some extra fines in there for how many devices you have, because it, it's, I think that is the deterrent. If you're going to hurt someone, you got to hurt them in a wallet. And that'll, and hopefully that will deter them from, from doing, from doing illegal fireworks on those days. We have perfectly safe and sane, we have charities that do the safe and sane, they can do those and have, and have just as great a time. So that's, that's where, that's where I'm coming from on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
Thank you, Mr. Huber. I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the thought that's gone into it. I would be in favor of, of even going more restrictive in the fine, and I haven't heard from council saying that that's too restrictive or unconstitutional in any form or fashion, so I assume that's, that's certainly legal to do. So my, so I'm, I'm supportive of, of the notion of increasing it to a thousand per device. The difficult part becomes if, if we don't enforce it, then that, that thousand dollars doesn't become, you know, a deterrent. And so to that, the, the recommendation relative to moving the red, white, and blue, I haven't heard from Ms. Kristen back there, that that would be something that, I would assume she wouldn't have let something go to the, to the, to the slides, that, that she wouldn't, that she couldn't move or support. But I would be interested in, in moving it, if for no other reason than to provide a little bit of relief or to spread the resources a bit, to not put such a demand on police and fire, right? That, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the most labor-intensive day of the year is the Fourth of July. And if for no better reason, if we can, if we can move that to, to, to make that better, I would, I would certainly support that. My, you know, when I was talking about it with a friend, they said, well, the only challenge would be that now you would have folks who go, oh, that's cool, I'll go to the park on the third, and then I'll do my illegal bang on the fourth, right? So it's possible to have some odd incentive there, but I'd be willing, I'd, I'd be willing to think about that, because again, it's, it's extremely labor-intensive. And if we, if we increase the fines, but we can't kick up the enforcement, then it means, it means nothing. So anyway, that's where I'm at with it. I'm, I'm willing to, definitely want to go to the thousand dollars a device, and I'd be willing to consider moving it so long as that works out, the, moving the red, white, and blue.
Councilmember Robles?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm in support of increasing the fine to a thousand dollars. I do however, would want to have a conversation over moving the red, white, and blue. It is on the Fourth of July, Fourth of July holiday, and I think that, that's something that we rally as a community and as a city and as a nation, so just going to leave that at that.
Yes, I, I would agree with Councilmember Robles' sentiments. I think, you know, moving something so important as the salute to red, white, and blue, honoring our independence and what that means for not only the city, but for the country, it's on the Fourth of July. And so I would hate to punish an entire city over the bad acts of ten, twenty people. So I, I'm hoping that the thousand dollar deterrence, and we, we haven't talked about sort of the backend of maybe what the maximum, maybe we don't define it, maybe we need to. I'm, I'm seeing nods. Okay.
Oh, my suggestion is not to put a maximum on it. The enforcement officers do have discretion on their citation authority, they have prosecutorial discretion on that. So, for example, if there are, just use a number, if there's twenty violations, the enforcement officer doesn't necessarily have to write a citation for twenty thousand. They have discretion on that, and I'd suggest you just leave that discretion in their hands.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. You know, I've been out there on the Fourth of July, so I've seen what this looks like, and I think a number of us have seen the harm. But I'm hoping that perhaps with this additional fine, that start, you know, that starts at a thousand, a hundred dollars is nothing, neither is a couple of hundred, but a thousand is pretty steep, and it's per violation. So. And to the extent that we can use technology, I know that we've been using drones and other things, but, you know, there's ways to offset where we don't have human beings on site. So I would be interested in looking at that of how we can use that even more enhanced, if possible, to sort of be the eyes and ears out there in the community. You had something else?
Yeah, Mayor, I just, well, first of all, I think that we use our drones now, but the, but the, I agree with you, the, I, I'm not supportive of moving red, white, and blue either, just.
Yeah.
I mean, because once Fourth of July is done, then why, it's hard to celebrate after that. I mean, I guess you can move it earlier, but I just think it's a special place and, and time for that celebration, so.
Thought, yeah, I know we use drones, but do, you know, if we need more, what do we need? Because, you know, so I'd love to hear more about that, or however you want to incorporate that, but if, if it means more investment in, on the technology side to offset that we don't have access to all of the officers because of the, the celebration at the park, then, you know, I, I would be willing to see, you know, what that looks like. But I think let's start with that thousand dollar penalty, most importantly.
And Mayor, I can, I can attest, as being boots on the ground out there on Fourth of July, drone usage is, is extremely successful for us.
Yeah.
They, they're able to capture images, video, photographs, we're able to determine what house is coming from, instead of, you know, we turn the corner and suddenly everybody stops doing what they're doing. The drones were extremely successful for us, and, and in the past few years, we've gone out with two, two separate drone teams.
Excellent. So I think that's easier to expand on that than moving an entire festival, you know, let's use technology to be our eyes and ears more where we can, and, and let's, you know, punish them in the pocketbook, and maybe that will be the deterrence, and then when we see this presentation next year, if any modifications need to occur, we can visit those then. So I think, do you have some general direction that you're hearing?
Understood, thank you.
Anything legal that I need to disclaim? All right, we're good. Attorney says we're good.
And, and I think if state law does increase the fine, we can always come back with the resolution, because the resolution will set the fine amount as opposed to having it hardcoded in our.
Can we say what the maximum allowed by state, and therefore if it adjusts, we don't have to revisit it, it just adjusts?
That's what we'll do in the code, and then just for housekeeping, have a resolution that sets that fine.
Okay, very good.
And for clarification, recommendation two, we, one, move forward with that as well as far as clarifying and strengthening our, our existing language for citing property owners and responsible persons. Okay. And I'm assuming recommendation three would also be in support.
Yeah, that one is, that's, yes, that was all good.
Okay.
Moving the event was not.
Thank, thank you for the direction.
All right, very good. All right, thank you so much. So with that, we will move on to our next item, please.
That'll be item nine point four to receive a presentation regarding the creation of a new community education program to be known as Elk Grove One-O-One, a great way to get to know your city.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Crystal Levizard. I am your Community Engagement and Government Relations Manager. So I'm very excited. This is going to be quick, but very excited to introduce a new program here in Elk Grove. We're calling it Elk Grove One-O-One. It is what that means. It's, it's an education campaign to find out what makes our city so great. So the purpose of this new program is to increase knowledge of our resident, like, increase resident knowledge of local government, to really promote civic education, to create future community leaders. This is supposed to be very empowering, very informative, and really build relationships. This program is designed to broaden the group of people that we're working with and really empower more residents to really lead as, as citizen leaders here in our city. So this is open. It's currently underway. We're accepting applications. The deadline to apply is March first. I checked before this meeting, we have over thirty people who have already applied, but there's still time, and so we're really excited to see the level of interest here. So who, who are we looking to get in this new program? This is open to all residents and business owners here in Elk Grove, as long as you're eighteen years and over. We're limiting this first inaugural cohort to thirty people, just for manageability and scale, but we attend, we're planning to do this every year, and we would love to increase that number over time if it makes sense. And that we are striving to select thirty people that are both geographically diverse, and then also just, like, really symbolize the diversity, the represent, represent the diversity here in Elk Grove. So we'll be trying to get lots of different kinds of perspectives and voices here in the room. So the topics are going to be very familiar to you all. We're going to start with an orientation. We're going to do a city tour to sort of look at a lot of our high priority projects that we are going to be focusing on. We're going to. We're gonna touch on public safety, police services, animal services, addressing housing needs, land use planning, public works, code enforcement, recycling, and of course, end with a celebration. So this is designed, it's similar to a lot of things, a lot of similar programs in other cities, where it's really meant to educate folks about local government and how we operate. So what can participants expect? They can expect to, with us, explore the foundations of local government, what this is and isn't. A lot of our civic education focuses at the federal level, but not a lot about local government. So a lot of folks are unaware of how this all works. We would like folks to learn how to navigate processes, city processes, understand how and why things happen, connect with city leaders. I'm really excited to see a lot of us, we're gonna have a lot of department staff lead these educational sessions, so they'll have that opportunity to, to meet new residents and connect with them on whatever passion they're sharing. And then really this interactive learning. We really want the sessions to not be talking at people, but I'm gonna be challenging all of our departments to create some sort of interactive activity, gamify, make this fun, make it easy, really lower that fear barrier to participation, so folks walk away feeling very empowered and excited to engage however they wanna engage in local government moving forward. So that's it. I promised it was quick, but do you have any questions? For me?
Excellent. At this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity. For outreach on this, are we just, how are we actively seeking?
So we.
Interest and applications?
I'll invite Kristen to add to this, but we have put things out through the city newsletter. We have a page up on our website. We have sent things through the listserv where people have, like, prior signed up to receive notifications about different community opportunities. We have mentioned it at several community events. We have asked some community partners to share it amongst their, the audiences they serve, but we would, I mean, I'm here today to extend that ask to you all as well. It's the timing of this. I would love you to share this opportunity with anyone you know would be interested in understanding local government or building networks or just, you know, getting more involved.
So I would also encourage, like, reaching out to all of our ethnic groups, the various ethnic chambers, so that it's not the same people who receive the information all the time. But we, we have, but that's where the burden's on us. We have to go out and seek it from them. I will certainly be sharing this as well, I mean, I'm sure all of us. But to that, and in terms of just, you know, when it comes to community outreach, community engagement, sometimes it's that extra step. It's not just our newsletters, our website, our socials. We have to purposely invite that engagement and stakeholder input.
I couldn't agree more, and I was pleasantly surprised. One of the questions in the application is, like, how familiar are you with local government? Anywhere from completely new to attend a meeting or two a year to like, I'm on a commission or a committee and I already come to lots of stuff. And we overwhelmingly, most people who have applied are completely new to local government, have never been to anything, and when I look at the list of names, I only recognize one.
Yeah.
So.
I would also, like, a great source also is everyone that's applied in the last two years for the DNI Commission. There's, there's a great pool of people that have an interest in serving. They may not be aware of this. But, and you can, you know, we have their information.
Yep, we do.
So we can get some feedback there as well, so that it's one more outlet for them to serve if they don't get on this, this DNI Commission soon.
And we have talked about if we get more, like, overwhelming applications, you know, giving people preference in the next cycle if they don't get selected for this cycle.
No, I think that this is a great program. Thank you. I'll start to the right. Councilmember Robles, any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I look forward to seeing our community involved in this. You asked one question, you know, how involved or do you know about local government? Not many folks know about that. They can't name the county supervisor nor the state assembly member, so hopefully they get familiarized for what we do here and how, you know, government works. So thank you for this.
Councilmember Spees?
Great idea, much needed. Perhaps a later iteration is, you know, very short, small videos that kind of give the flavor of what each of those is talking about so they can put, be put on the web and, and reach more, more information or reach more people. Thank you.
Councilmember Sun?
Yeah, also a great, great idea. One thing I would ask is, you know, as you spend a lot of time, I think a lot of us did, explaining to people why we're different from the city of Sacramento. And I think when you go through this, you'll be educating everybody on Elk Grove, which is fantastic too. But maybe just remind them that other cities are different, so they understand, you know, just what they learn here is specific to our city. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
It promotes transparency and openness of government. And for folks who live here in Elk Grove, it gives them the ability to learn the differences in how the city, Kasuma CSD, Elk Grove Unified School District, and Elk Grove Water District work together to make the city a work for, work for all of us. And so that's, that's the core part that I really like about Elk Grove One-O-One. Looking forward to seeing this being launched. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would, just going off the cuff, I would love to have you guys, you know, not all five at once, but coming when your schedule's allowed to come, observe, say hi, really thank the residents and business owners for, for participating.
You're not suggesting that we might need to go to some of those places?
I am not suggesting that, Councilmember Spees. I am merely suggesting that this is, you know, it's, it's a less formal opportunity to have a conversation than this, so.
No, I think it's, it's a great opportunity, so thank you for leading the effort.
Yep, thank you.
Excellent. All right, so our last is just comments, reports, future agenda items, anything, Councilmember Sun?
Just SECAG tomorrow. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Sacramento Public Library Budget Audit Committee meets tomorrow at one, and then we have our general meeting at three. And that all takes place tomorrow.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
I've got nothing, so I can pass on.
I had a regional sign today, but nothing to report.
All right, thank you. I'll wave my report. For adjournment, I know that there, you know, put on the news and there was horrible tragedy today in Kansas City with shooting and, you know, children being shot. I think we've, there's already been a couple of fatalities, so, you know, I wanna adjourn in the memory of just everyone that's not only that was harmed by today's shooting, but just senseless violence everywhere in the world. Thank you.
And I also want to make an adjournment in the memory of Diane Butts.
Yes.
Many of us know her as Diane Hanford Butts. Great friend to myself and definitely friends with her son Preston III. So if any of you are familiar with Hanford Reading Mix, Hanford Sanding Gravel, the boss lady, as I affectionately call her. Yeah, she passed away on, on January twenty-second. They held her memorial on last Friday with her celebration of life. And so she is a, definitely a dear, sweet person that I've come to know. Very, very blunt, very straightforward, but a heart of gold, and she will be missed.
Thank you.
And Mayor, just before we, I wanna also end on the three service members that passed away from the Army this month, Sergeant William Rivers, forty-six, Specialist Kennedy Sanders, and Specialist Brianna Manoff, twenty-four and twenty-three. These were Army reservists who passed away, so.
Thank you. May their memories be a blessing to all that knew them and loved them. Thank you. We are adjourned at eight twenty-five.